Welcome, May 7, 2019, 6:30 at the William-Belden Training Room. Called order at 6:30, we'll be meeting with the Finance Committee in a couple of seconds here. Announcements, again, Tuesday, the 14th, next week, town meeting, 7 o'clock, Smith Academy, the band concerts on the 15th, and Memorial Day activities on Sunday to 26th, so I hope everybody can attend. Those are my announcements. Do you guys have any announcements?
Just town elections are on May 21st.
Okay. Public forum, do we have anybody here for public forum? Okay, we don't have any in minutes, so we'll move right to posted business, which is topic one to review with Finance Committee FY 2020 budget, annual town meeting warrant articles, and capital projects. So, I guess we'll go with you Chair and Chairman of the Finance, Mr. Williams.
Hello. Welcome to everybody, and I can't believe it's actually town meeting next week, it's come up pretty fast.
Just like that.
So, tonight's the night where we're gonna settle on a budget that we've been working on, so I guess there've been a couple updates this week, and that things that have happened since last Tuesday, which I wasn't at the meeting, but anyway, so let's start with free cash, because that's the fun one. And let us remind townspeople, as free cash is not really free, but anyway. The figure we had been using on the budget was $322,000 for free cash. We had a couple of conference calls with Justin the end of last week, and then Monday, and so the number that we are now using for free cash is $404,000.
And snow and ice have already been deducted.
And snow and ice, which was roughly $90,000, has already been deducted from that, so we do not have to, we do not have to add that. So, the other part of that, in discussing it with Justin, is, you know, another one of our major costs this year that were unaccounted for was the water main break on Route 5, which was roughly $100,000. As it turns out, as they, we do have, there is some money in water, sewer water surplus. Again, surplus is not the right word, but there is, there is, there is some money, there's about, yeah, as of fiscal year 18, there's about $168,000 of so-called surplus. Our deficit from '19 is about $158,000.
That includes the water main break.
Which includes the water main break, and I'm sure it includes some other things in that number, right Phil?
Sounds right.
Sounds right? Okay, so, we can use that $158,000, we can use 158 of the $168,000 to take care of that deficit at this point in time.
Yep.
Now, we don't know, well, we'll cover '19, so that's, that's what we know, so we don't have to do that. We have the special ed overrun, that's still $60,440, that will come out of free cash. We have some additional deficits from...
This was DPW deficit, right, from FY '18, $24,000?
Yeah.
$24,000.
Twenty-four is on there, $24,403 is deficit from '18, I think that's actually snow and ice.
Yes.
DPW, there's $3,000 from some liability cost.
But Justin said he put it into the water sewer retained earnings.
The three?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh.
That's, didn't he say that, Brian?
I don't recall that to be perfectly honest.
I think that may now be in the retain, that's what I read down.
Okay, so we don't need that $3,000 coming out of there.
Yeah.
Okay, we will check with that.
Okay.
$3,000?
For the DPW liability cost, it had something to do...
Oh, for the invoice, the invoice of $3,000?
Yeah, and he said he would take it out of the water sewer retained earnings.
Oh, okay, I didn't recall that, all right.
Maybe I'm the only one who's recalling this, it's worrying me now.
So, let's, yeah, so, what was the three?
I wrote it down.
Was that the brush issue?
No.
Yes, yeah, the grinding, the brush grinding.
Three thousand?
No.
Oh, we're talking about a different $3,000?
The $3,000 was the settlement for the brush.
Right, for brush grinding.
So that can't come out of water sewer.
So that didn't come out of water sewer.
So that's gotta come out of free cash.
Right, that's right.
Okay, sorry.
Okay. All right, that doesn't, so, then, we're gonna take $50,000 for the I&amp;I study, which we have to do. We were kinda hoping there was enough surplus for that, but there wasn't, so, $13,000 is our ongoing paramedic costs that we agreed to with, for the ambulance, and then, we'd like to add $7,000 for town hall workstation replacements.
That figures for half of the workstation requests, isn't it?
That's right, that's half.
That's half.
Right, and then the big one is this.
Yeah, so the big one is, we found out that the assessor's overlay in fiscal year 18 was in deficit, $163,000. So, really to no fault to anybody, it just...
It got certified by the auditor, and certified by the state, and it wasn't right.
And it wasn't right, so, so we have to correct that. The good part about that is, we were, Justin was a little bit worried that we were gonna get penalized a little bit from the state, we did not get penalized from the state, they're willing to work with us. The best way to handle it is just take that right out of free cash and, and be done with it, so. So, anyway, so, if you sum total all that...
I don't know the answer to that, because it's not this number.
It's not that number.
It's close, though.
I believe it was $90,000 is what we estimated was left.
Leftover, yeah.
Was left.
Three fourteen, six nineteen.
Somebody wanna put some math together for that?
That sounds right.
That's about right.
That's how I call it.
I missed the exact opening figure.
Uh, four oh four.
Four oh four thousand, four oh four thousand.
So the remaining number is nine, eight, three, three, $83,381.
That's right, because it was 90, but we took seven for the workstation, so we're at $83,000.
Three hundred eighty-one.
Three eighty-one, should write that down, someone, um, that's leftover free cash.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Then we identified four things that we would want to consider. The ambulance.
Right.
The putting money back in the stabilization fund, the request from the 350th Anniversary Committee, and whether we want to fund the other half of the town hall workstations. Now, I wrote it down, so those are the four things I wrote down, did I forget something?
Yes, there's the town hall generator install, $11,000.
Okay.
Okay.
And there's some other DPO debuts to consider, I suppose, the highway garage pole.
Yeah, there's other...
I have a question regarding the generator.
Yeah, me too.
Me too.
Is that the cost to install the generator?
That's pretty electrical.
That's the electrical camp.
You have the generator box.
I thought we had the generator, okay.
Can't wrap that into town hall renovation.
That's precisely when they're gonna do it, but it's basically a line.
Yeah, that wouldn't be part of the, no, okay.
So, so, I think, what I would like, what I would like to do now is, let's set that aside for a few minutes, and let's go to the actual budget.
That's what I'm trying to do, I can't replicate it.
Which, which we need to do, and then let's come back. I did have a conversation with the fire chief today, which, about the ambulance, so, anyway, the other thing, and Betsy, and Marlene, and Brian helped remind me, is, you know, in our discussions with Justin, and I think we wanna be pretty careful that we have enough money in the levy limit, we don't want it too tight, because we don't know what else might come up, we addressed what we knew, but there's...
And John Robert was concerned about, he doesn't really know special ed costs until the end of the summer.
Right, so...
Which is what that $60,000 out of free cash was this time around.
Right, right, so, I believe right now, where's our levy limit right now?
What did you have, Marlene?
On your second page, so I plugged in the 2% COLAs.
Yes.
But I still wanna, I still need to check the numbers, I used, so I talked to Justin last week, and, so what he did is, his calculation on that front page, was it two and a half percent increase, but he took into consideration all salaries. So I went through each, each tab, budget tab, and plugged in the 2% increase based on the report that Edwina had printed out, but I'm short a couple thousand dollars, she has $26,700 and something, and I came up with 23. I did not plug a 2% increase for the town accountant's budget, because we're just funding a salary.
Right.
For fiscal year '20, but I need to look through the numbers and double check them, so I, yeah, I have...
Twenty-six was for the 2%, so it was...
Thirteen per percent, roughly.
I don't know.
Thirty thousand per 1%?
Yeah. So, let's go to page two, and...
I apologize for not having the budget on the screen.
That's okay.
I just had it open and closed out every off.
So, on page two, it shows our levy capacity surplus deficit at a $55,000 deficit, so...
Is that under limit, or is that excess capacity?
That's what I'm trying to remember.
I believe this is...
Is that under?
Right, it shouldn't be a deficit, it should be, because we're used to seeing it as a deficit, but the way Justin has it set up, it would look like a surplus, so it was...
Well, it looks like a deficit here.
Looks like a deficit.
It does, it does, right, that's the way I'm reading it. So, numbers, so I plugged in the 2% increase, I increased the assessor's budget expense line, that was significant to...
How much was that, was that like 6,000?
That was another $3,000, I think.
$3,000.
So we had already increased it, and increased another three, and...
Reevaluation.
You have to change the free cash number as well, right?
No, why?
No.
And...
None in the budget.
It says three fourteen on the schedule, not four oh four.
Yeah.
Yeah, but free cash won't fall down to, I don't, yes, we have to change it.
But if we didn't use it, we don't have to change it.
Right.
Doesn't affect the levy, right?
Right, well, you're using all but the eighty-three grand, right, that you were just talking about, so it's more three fourteen.
Well, unless it's all, unless it's not all in now here on the U side, yeah.
If you're looking at the other financing sources page at the top, it shows, it would be the one, two, three, fourth, I'm sorry.
Five, page five.
Page five, at the top.
Yeah.
And you see how the free cash is distributed, 7,000, that's in the budget for the seven computers, or half of, half of the cost, and then the 314,006.19, and that is your articles on the last page.
Okay.
That are currently funded from free cash.
Makes sense.
So correlate, so correlate in this...
So that added together is 321, that leaves us our 83,000.
Correct.
Right, yeah, so we're right.
Three fourteen plus the seven is 321, and that's, yes, because we've already identified where those are gonna be used.
So what concerns me is the 55,000. Is that a surplus, or is that a deficit?
The way it's labeled on here, it says it's a deficit.
Deficit, right, right.
Because it says calculated excess levy capacity. So, so if that's excess levy capacity, and it's a $55,000 deficit, then that's problematic.
Yeah.
If it, if that label actually means levy capacity and not excess, then it's not a deficit, and that's okay.
Right, I sent it to Justin late this afternoon to take a look at, because I did have a concern about that.
Well, seeing the deficits in the front says...
Well, is it, is it, is it, is the column meant to measure the excess, or is it meant to measure the levy capacity, I guess is the...
Right.
Last week, so this changed today, last week it was 200, on that, on that page that we're looking at, last week it was 206,346.65.
Surplus.
Correct.
And now, all of a sudden, it's a deficit.
Now it's changed, yeah.
All right, so that's...
We have to figure out why.
Two sixty-one, you don't have to...
Yeah, so something, something got added.
Right.
Where is it there?
Where's, where's the calculation of the maximum allowable levy?
It's in there.
It's...
The two and a half is in there, it's on, that should be on the...
It's seventy four five, right?
That should be on the first, first page.
So, so on that page, that second page, in the fiscal year '20 column, the 7,000 filled in, and the three fourteen, six nineteen from free cash.
It's three fourteen, six nineteen, and it says other available funds, three twenty-one, and this is similar, so that's last week.
Yeah.
So last week, we had less money, and this was positive, so that doesn't make sense.
Doesn't make sense.
The cherry sheet number at the top has increased slightly, because I updated that with the house numbers.
So Marlene, are you looking at last week's budget next door?
I have that right here.
Okay, so look on page two. Under other financing sources, free cash is the first thing.
Correct.
If you go over to FY two, two, twenty, last week, that, that was blank, see that?
I have other financing sources, free cash is twenty, three twenty-one, four fifty-four.
No, no, it's blank.
This is the one we used last week.
Call him and ask him what it means.
Bottom line, what is it?
Yep, whoops, sorry. Should we call him on his cellphone, and just ask him what the 55 is?
Let me show you.
Huh?
See, this number is blank.
Oh, you do have three twenty-one.
Right.
Oh, 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 up there, okay.
This week, there's a new number in there.
Sharon.
314,000 more. So notice that last week, the calculated excess levy was 206,346 down here, right?
Right.
And this week, when you add that three fourteen in, you get negative 55. So why is it when you add revenues, this number goes negative?
Yeah, because it doesn't really represent, but it says it represents.
Right.
Right, so that, yeah, that is the free cash number.
Right, not excess levy capacity.
Not excess.
Because under levy capacity would be a surplus, actually.
Right.
If you're under the levy, you're going up to it.
You have capacity.
Correct, to go up to it, if it's measuring, I don't know, if it's measuring it the other way, then it is a deficit.
So you see how, at putting that number in there, brings us to this.
Right, and that's the, that's coming from one of the other pages.
What you're saying is actually 55, that we...
Right.
Good, that's a good news.
I know there's a formula in there, and that's the free cash that's funding the special articles.
Have you used this section before?
So, I don't know how to read this page, but I figured out why the number is different.
Okay.
They tell you why.
Well, yeah, I was just gonna see if I can get a, I'll step out and see if I can get a hold of Justin.
Texting him right now.
Okay.
Oh yeah, Sharon, reach out to me.
He's typing, dot, 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 go, Justin, okay, so you saw that difference, did you see it?
Yeah.
When you add that in, this goes negative.
That's what the question is, is that really a deficit, or is it capacity?
So, from page three, you're, Marlene, you calculated, you calculated the maximum allowable levy at 7845, 527, okay, that's page three, see that?
Yeah.
And that's the, okay, and on the recap sheet, we're showing total receipts from property tax levy, the same identical number, so we're basically saying that we're gonna raise that amount of money from taxation, and so the, so the, that would mean that the surplus or deficit on the levy limit is zero, because the maximum is 7845, and we are saying we're gonna raise 7845 from taxation, that's how I read this, but, John, you're shaking your head, but I don't know why.
I just think it's highly unlikely that we happen to hit like zero.
Well, it's almost, it's almost like that, that number, 7845, on the second page is a plug.
He has the budget workbook that I sent him this week.
You plug that number in, as a receipt.
Well, it's easy to figure out, go back to seven, four, six, four, five, five, eight.
So, he said that if it's a negative 55,000 on FY, FY '20, that number is supposed to be a positive number.
That's what I thought.
He's like, you overspent by 55,000, but his bigger concern, that comment was, I sent him out, because I said, Marlene, you had, you had a free cash number in there, and we had 206,000, he's like, well, something's wrong with this to begin with, because we did have excess of 204,000 in FY '19 anyway, so there's a bigger problem.
No, you didn't.
Well, he and I reviewed this last week, he didn't...
You're 7845, 527, 58, you're 200,000, 600,000.
Didn't change anybody's budget, did we?
Well, we made some changes last week.
Yeah, you have to go through it.
We're gonna have to go through it.
Yeah, that's what you have to do.
Okay.
We added 7,000 to the IT, we increased money for postage, removed money from the accountant's line, the town administrator.
But we moved it, oh yeah, but, but that accountant, moving to the accountant's line didn't increase the actual money.
No, just shifted, shifted a little.
All right, so, let's go to page seven.
I don't, well, access to the school over there, it's a, um...
Okay.
I need your... Why are we doing what there is?
Because we have to go through the expenses.
It's not even showing the latest version.
That's where the 745 come from, the amount that's to be raised in taxation. Well, that's what we have to ask them from.
Right.
But, 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 but now, it looks like a plug from the levy limit, it's identical.
Sure.
Yeah, that didn't happen.
No.
There's no way.
Okay, all right, let's have one conver, one conversation, please, just makes it a little easier, all right, so, let's start on page seven, on the expenses, and let's just go through those line by line, and let's make sure that we do not, you know, that we've got all that right.
Yep.
So, the moderator, we pay way too much money, I say cut him.
Okay, is a $2 difference.
No, I'm just kidding.
Yes, we're on page seven.
Before you get into the detail, I'm just wondering if someone quickly could just add up on each of these schedules, the bottom, the bottom line, the total for raising appropriate from each schedule, and I believe that should be the number that appears on the recap sheet for the amount we're gonna raise from taxation.
Remember, we did this last year.
Right?
What, which number do you want us?
You see that bottom?
It's right here, 737, 379.
Right, you see that 737?
Yeah, that's all expenses.
Right, that, well, that's the amount to be raised from taxation.
Right.
From, in the general government category.
So you like recap, all the...
Yeah, I understand, I understand.
I'm just wondering, in the next schedule, public safety is 482.
Yeah.
482,000, and the next schedule is 5,018, for, that's obviously education, so if we add all of those numbers together, that's what we're saying, we should be raising from taxation, and that should be what is plugged into that second...
Not, not necessarily.
No, why?
Well, it, it should come close, but it's not, what we raised from taxation is what we raised last year, plus two and a half percent, that's all we can raise.
That's the limit, I'm talking about what, what your budget is saying, we're gonna raise some taxation.
I understand.
Right.
And then, yeah, right.
And we calculated the limit, the limit, 7,485,000, or 845,000.
So if we're over the limit with these numbers, then we're over the limit.
Right, but if we add all these numbers, all these RNA totals together, from each of these schedules.
Right.
What does that come to? So far...
Yeah, we should have a couple people doing it, no offense, Sean, to make sure the numbers come out, they match, we hope.
At least give us a rough idea. I don't have the calculator in yet, so I can't...
Or are you doing, like, some of this stuff, oh no, this is debt, gotta add that, okay.
Wait a minute. No.
We don't add enterprise to this, right?
No.
Get it something there?
737, 379, 42784.
Oh, no, this is debt, we add debt to this. Okay, and so what is this number supposed to equal?
It should be whatever your mom worked on.
We're gonna raise some taxation for the budget.
On page one?
No. Wow, no, it's not.
It's like eight point something.
It's over, yeah, it is.
It's over eight million dollars, that came up, so...
I came up with a nine. Yeah, it is.
That's what I mean.
Nine...
It's 1, 3, 1, 3, 4, 29, it's $9 million, is what it has out here, so, that's not...
That's not what...
It's not, it's 9 million.
I don't know.
So let's do the, so let's do the 9 million minus the 7, four, well, the 7...
Eight four five?
Yeah.
The 7845, 527?
What's the rest of it, sorry, 527?
527.58 cents.
I won't even change that one, 1,185,296.
All right, so was there something?
Yeah, but, but in this with taxation, all this gets, isn't that the number that we want to equal?
Well, no, because, well, wait a minute, because you're, this is, so, that's taxation.
Taxation, and then state aid.
Right, so that's the levy, that's state aid, and enterprise funds, and then local receipts are stuff that's not taxation, so...
Yeah, but still, that's, yeah, but that is the number that we can budget. Yeah, but that is the number that we can budget.
Correct, that's the number you can budget.
So really, the number is, should be ten million, six ninety-five, oh twenty-two, cause that's everything that we have available as a step.
That's all the revenue.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is ten million.
It's not the revenue that's the issue, it's the amount we're going to raise some taxation.
Well, unless, um, there are other things included in our, unless there are other things.
All our insurance, there's a medical going there.
Raise and appropriate, that's page three.
Well, raise and appropriate might also, let's see, I have to look at the bunch, let's see.
Oh no, this is a levy.
So.
Okay, maximum allowable levy goes seven eight four.
But there are other things in there.
Four eighty-two. Plus four. Plus.
You have a.
Five oh one.
So if we go here, like, let's just take a random one. Let's take, um, not that.
Plus three oh five.
We're playing with.
Yeah.
Plus one eight four. It is six thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven dollars.
One three, one three.
You're gonna raise it, right?
Yeah.
So if light going across.
Yeah.
One, seven, eight. Plus three, four, two.
So the seven thousands is the cash, that's right?
All right, so we've, we've never had a number where we're fifty-five thousand in the rears. This is, this is the first sheet we've seen.
That's even close.
Darrell, the unemployment, on the special articles, in the articles, twenty grand for the unemployment fund, is that gonna come out of, we're gonna raise and appropriate that from taxation, or are you guys gonna pay that from? It's a twenty thousand dollars here from.
It's always good to appropriate.
I believe, yeah.
Okay, darling.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Nine, five, six, nine is what.
Here, here.
Nine million, but.
Here's.
Nine, five, six, nine is what, right now is in the budgets, coming out of taxation.
Okay, so. I, I think we need a little timeout. And I, I personally think we need to have a discussion with Justin. We can't have a discussion with Justin at this time. We could sit here all night and go through this budget, we're not gonna, I'm, I'm sorry, we're not gonna figure it out and know that it, it, it's right or wrong until we actually talk to him, so. I, I actually.
What did he find? Oh, he found a mistake, what's the mistake?
The two, um, uh, found it, one of the formulas was overwritten and now he has a surplus of two fifty-nine. So what page did he have?
Two hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars? Well, that's way too much. So, so I don't trust that number either.
We had two, six.
But that actually lines up with what Marlene had. Marlene had two hundred and.
Oh yeah, we had two oh six plus forty-eight.
Well, you just said that, you said that.
We had two oh six, three forty-six.
Plus forty-eight, yep.
No, the two hundred and four, one, seven, one from last year.
Last year was incorrect, but we're not really worried about that column.
No.
He opened the file, he sent it this afternoon.
What, what was his number?
He said found it, one of the formulas. One of the formulas is over and I get a surplus of two fifty-nine, one seventy-two.
Okay, that's pretty darn close. Because last week, we had two oh six and we added forty thousand back in from around professional services.
So does, you, this add to the school and all that?
That, I think it does, and that's what I'm.
So, so Marlene? Does, does the budget that you gave us tonight, that, does that include the hundred and sixty-eight or hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars to the school? And all the things that we?
We updated the school number last week.
You updated the school number, you, you added the two percent to all non-union, what else, what else am I missing?
Uh, two percent colas, tax title of three thousand, postage, uh, and then this was a discussion.
Oh, and a discussion.
Right, but yeah, it should have had just about all the.
Yeah, we had pretty much everything in this.
All the changes we made last week were made here.
Okay.
And then, um, the two percent colas added, you increased the assessors budget.
Now, I was adding twenty thousand for the treasure collector.
Had we added the twenty thousand, did you add?
We updated the treasurer, or the, yeah, the treasurer's line last week.
So that, you added twenty thousand there?
Mm-hmm.
You added the extra, and then you updated the assessors one.
The twenty thousand's in the treasurer's line, I'm looking at it.
Yeah, okay.
Well.
So, so what did Justin say that number was, two hundred and?
Two fifty-nine, one seventy-two. And I got two fifty-four, three forty-six, so I was within five thousand dollars of Justin.
Two fifty-two?
That were under the levy limit.
Fifty-four that we, that we've already, um.
No. Two fifty-four, three forty-six that we had available to appropriate.
Okay.
And then I, and then we took all that stuff out. And the number I ended up with was nineteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
From your two fifty-four.
Yes.
So we add five thousand to it.
Right.
So it's, basically with paying what you guys just spoke about, leaves us about twenty-four thousand.
Twenty-four thousand, yep.
In, in, under the levy limit.
Under the levy.
Doesn't leave us the money, but it's under.
So his under the levy, what was his number under the levy?
The two fifty-nine.
Yeah, see, that's, that's.
But he, I don't think that's too high, you're saying that.
Well, that doesn't account for all the appropriations we included.
Yeah, that's right.
What, in his budget? You just, didn't you send him the most, most current? Didn't it include the school?
Yeah.
Didn't it include all these things?
All that stuff.
Oh, yeah.
So how could his number still be two hundred and fifty-nine thousand?
It shouldn't be.
Maybe that's, maybe that's his starting point and then.
That's what I don't know.
Marlene, if you're logged into your desktop, you should, you are, you should have an icon for your email and he just emailed it back to you.
Okay.
So let's see what he has actually in there on the.
Yeah.
Oh, you know what, no, I ended up restarting it over there, so I'm not logged in over there. So I don't, um, yeah, I don't have the.
I just wanna make sure.
Yeah.
That, you know.
We're not needing to get it tomorrow, Friday.
So, in the budget for this year, you know, we, you know, we added a hundred and sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars for the school, we added.
That was no longer needed in Marlene's budget, that's where we got that money from.
Okay, and then two percent colo, we've decided that was twenty-seven thousand dollars?
Yep.
And then tax title for three thousand, postage for eighteen hundred.
Oh, you know, the other adjustment that I made was in the health insurance line, Ed Ween gave me an updated number yesterday, so I've reduced that from six forty-three to six hundred thousand.
Okay.
So that added forty-three thousand dollars.
But that varies a lot. Depending on who's part of the plan.
Yeah.
It's never, everything's not segregated into another department.
So, yes. The schools went up.
Yeah, it's, it's everything else.
The schools went up.
Okay.
From last year, four, seven, twenty-eight to this year, it's a hundred and sixty.
Right. Call it a hundred and seventy thousand and.
Yeah, so it's in there.
Okay. So the question for the finance committee and the selectmen is, you know, where do we, are we comfortable with all these numbers? And, 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 and so we think that the levy limit is gonna be somewhere around twenty-four thousand dollars?
Yep. That's what we think.
So.
And if that's true.
If that's true, are we comfortable, I mean, I, we certainly don't want it any lower.
What's option B?
There is no option B, yeah, yeah, cut, cut more, cut more budgets and make it higher, but.
Right.
It's pretty good.
So.
Are there any more items that are somewhat not too high from a, you know?
I think we covered.
Can you think of any?
I can't think of any.
I had some written down for the.
So.
Free cash.
So, I guess. I mean, I'm not really comfortable, like. Adopting this as the budget until we confirm, confirm.
Do you wanna continue later this week?
What?
Well, I wanna see what, let's see what Justin sent back here.
Yeah, I'm opening it up right now.
We, we can look at this pretty easily.
And I have lots of footnotes, so if there's any questions about, you know, what is in itself.
What's the difference between that page and the page we have?
Nothing.
He just emailed, is this the one he just emailed?
This is what I sent to him today. So let's go to that, um.
What he just emailed.
Let's go to the bottom of this page, what you have in front of you.
You know, somebody's gotta check it, but.
Right, so there's the two fifty-nine.
Two fifty-nine, one seventy-two.
That's what you had today, Marlene.
No, this is what he just sent her.
This is what he just sent back, what I printed this, late this afternoon is what you have in front of you.
So that.
So I have to ask him what.
So he fixed the formula.
Well, let's look at the budget sheets and see if the things that we added are really there, cause I, my guess is that's the problem.
I wanted to do with, yes, so.
Yeah, so can we go, let's go to the school.
So anything highlighted has a change.
Thank you.
So you wanna go to the school?
Yeah, cause then he'll tell.
That's a, that's a big, that's a big one.
Cause education.
So that changed from two thousand nineteen to FY twenty, went up one hundred and sixty-some thousand dollars.
No delta. But that's, that's precisely what he, that's the increase for level funding.
Right. Nine minus six is three, eight minus two is seven, yeah.
So that isn't changing?
Now the plus is in front of it and I can't subtract, okay. There we go. But yeah, there's a difference there, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's about what it is.
So that looks good.
So. That's correct.
It's two hundred, well, two hundred thousand would be, uh, four million, nine, twenty-eight, six forty.
Yeah.
Minus four.
Yeah, so that is increase, an increase over last week's budget report we had.
But remember, he's got, yeah.
But is it the right number?
Other revenues in there too, yeah. I mean, he can use, I mean, John, like, see other revenues in there.
Oh, I understand.
Yeah.
So the difference between twenty and nineteen should be the hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars we're talking about.
Um.
Oh, it is, you had the, okay.
Okay, it should, yeah.
His new workbook should show the difference from.
Yeah.
We'll get, that'll be another discussion after this.
Oh, that column's not here.
No, thank you.
Did you just run that number?
And it should, Brian, cause all the, a lot of the other sheets have the difference column, for some reason this one doesn't.
Oh, okay, well, I thought I saw before what the difference was, but, okay.
I, I will, um.
That's all right, so we're good with that, so that was correct?
It's not hidden, but it's.
I don't think it's correct.
Can you move back over to the nineteen?
Yeah, that's great, thank you.
It's not correct.
Uh, it doesn't look at five zero one eight, four seventy-four?
What's wrong with this?
Minus.
Right, so from taxation is, oh, wait a minute.
Two eight, six forty?
Oh, yeah, that didn't get updated.
It's two hundred and eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty-four dollars, right?
It's not. The four, five, two, nine, eight, eight, five.
Well, well.
I can't see it, cause of that.
Was, was.
The vocational schools shouldn't be part of that.
Right.
Oh, yeah, so there's other things in there.
Vocational's in there, the four eighty-eight should not be part of our budget, for this, for the school department budget.
So three hundred line, Hattieville Public Schools, the difference is exactly one sixty-eight, seven five nine.
And, and, cause we, we had, he had raised. We knew that vocab was going up, right? What it?
Yes.
We, we just didn't account for it.
Right. That's right.
How much did vocab go up?
So it is incorrect, what should it be?
It's correct, it went up a hundred and twenty-two.
Oh, it is, okay.
There's just other things showing in the total line that aren't part of that appropriation.
Vocat's up a hundred and twenty-two.
Yeah, yeah.
So, which, so vocab is up a hundred and twenty grand, still like, how are we still two hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars funded?
That's gotta be covered.
It's gonna be in his.
It's gotta be covered somewhere.
Cause vocab is covered by the town.
No, I understand that, but I mean, from, for your, your question of how are we still at two fifty-nine? It, it's gotta be subtracted somewhere on his, um.
Yeah.
I would hope so.
Prior to the two fifty-nine being the final number.
Don't get me wrong, if we have two hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars, then we're having a completely different discussion.
Right.
Yeah, you gotta go in the budget, that's for sure.
Right. So, but.
It seems odd.
It just seems off.
Well, given that's, that it's a very similar number to the number that Marlene had last week beforehand, right?
Yes.
Before we made changes.
Yes.
So what changed?
Makes me nervous.
So what, I mean.
So let's go through our changes.
Cause our, our basic.
I updated, they weren't significant increases, I updated the cherry sheet figures.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's start in revenues.
Cause it's shorter.
Okay. So, revenues.
There's no way.
Is that page two we wanted to start at?
Well, let's make sure they agree, or see if they agree.
So, this is last week and this is this week, is that what we're comparing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Still this week, it's just updated from Justin.
Right, this is brand new, the screen is brand new as of today.
Mm-hmm, so the only thing that changed was this.
So we're gonna start on. Pay, yeah, start on state receipts.
Mm-hmm.
Cherry, cherry sheet is up four thousand dollars over last week.
Yeah, okay, but that's the adjustment.
Chapter seventy.
That was the adjustment.
Yeah.
And this changed.
All right, so yeah, there's the three oh nine, zero, zero, four.
The what?
Yeah.
The bottom line.
Yeah, the two, three oh nine, two million, three hundred and nine thousand.
Marlene, I hate to even ask this question, but is there any way to make that slightly bigger?
Uh, let's see here.
I feel like I'm showing age here, but.
Oh, that's the breakout of what it is.
Two hundred at the, yeah, whatever.
Maybe even like a hundred and twenty-five would be fine, yeah. Ah, there we go.
All right.
Ed Ween, your spreadsheet today.
There's the two, three oh nine, oh, oh, four, that agrees.
I forget.
Oh, hang on.
I almost came down.
Not much on our page here.
Page two.
Two, three, oh, nine, oh, oh, four.
Yeah.
Okay, what are you looking at?
Yeah. Two, two, three, oh, nine, oh, oh, four, and that's what we have on here.
Yep. Okay, so let's go to local receipts.
They're all the same. And then other financing sources changes.
Does that agree with last week?
Oh, yeah.
Does the local receipts agree with last week?
Yes, it does.
That's the two million, one forty-five.
Other.
Oh, page three, wait a minute, wrong place, okay, here we are, this is local receipts.
Should be two million, one forty-five.
Okay, whoops.
Nine, five, seven? Yeah, so there's local receipts.
Oh, nine, five, seven is, yeah. Oh, I see, and then enterprise fund receipts are added to this, aligned with community preservation.
Mm-hmm.
So that gives us the two million, one forty-five.
Yeah. So that's right.
Okay.
Well, I mean, the nine fifty-sevens right, apparently.
Right, we haven't seen.
Okay.
The enterprise.
Hang on, we're gonna look at other financing. Oh.
Free cash, now last week, we had nothing in free cash, but this.
So I, so I, um, plugged in that number that we're using.
And that's the three fourteen, that's where, that, that.
Fourteen are special articles, and I reference the article numbers there, actually, I have to update those because those may have changed yesterday.
Can I?
Yeah.
Say something?
Yeah.
On page one. On page one.
Okay, page one.
Yeah.
This was his summary sheet. This was supposed to be accounting for dummies. Remember that?
Yes.
Okay. If you look at these numbers, for instance, education under proposed expenses, that's the proposed fiscal year twenty, but, school budget.
Mm-hmm.
So, he said proposed revenues up top, ten, six ninety-five. These proposed expenses include the updates that we advocated for last week. And what he's saying is available for appropriation, what's left over is seventy-seven thousand dollars. See that?
Yep.
Yeah.
This is supposed to be the summary sheet for us to use.
Right, but there's something wrong with this. I mean, we already know that.
Well...
But, available for appropriation and how your expenses compared to the levy limit are two different issues.
That's very possible, but he thought this was going to be helpful to us.
Right, right.
It's not feeling very helpful right now.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, there's, I think there's gotta be some, I mean, I don't know what cell was having a problem, but there's either something wrong with the ten million, six ninety-five or the ten million, six seventeen. You wanted the two, right?
Something's off.
See, even in that summary sheet, Betsy, that first, that top line, that top column, it says proposed revenues, taxation.
Yeah, yeah.
That's the identical amount that the levy limit calculation gives.
So, so someone's assuming that we're gonna just raise to the levy limit from taxation, and that's what that number is. But, that may not be the case when we get finished with...
But, don't you have to zero it?
No, no, we, we told them to raise it to levy limit.
Because, because, because we, our basic premise for this budget was the levy, you know, the levy limit plus fifty thousand dollars from the assessors' estimated growth
Right.
is essentially three hundred thousand dollars. And so, we built the budget off last year's number plus three hundred thousand dollars.
Right, right.
Yes, exactly.
Right?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, and that's on page three or something.
So, I see a number that's incorrect on this first page, right here, other expenses to be raised. So, if you look at the top, the formula's coming from finance uses. And it's, has a number of one fifty-five, a hundred and fifty-five thousand. But, if you go to that sheet, it's, and I'm, I'm, I'm saying a hundred and fifty, a million, five hundred and fifty-three thousand. So, we have twenty-five thousand, actually, yeah, Justin had plugged that in. That's for tax title. Let me check this formula here. D three, D sixteen, okay, so that's, I'm gonna hide these comments right now.
Let's bet you now.
See, Darryl, the key is, out of the ten million, six hundred thousand dollars worth of expenses, we have to figure out how, how many of those dollars are being raised from taxation in our schedules. And then, when we have that total, you compare that to the levy limit, and that will tell us whether we're over or under.
D seven.
What we can raise in taxation.
Well, does the schedule really work though?
That's the, yeah, that's the question.
But the, the problem with that is that the schedule, the schedule just doesn't include taxation, though.
It's not broken out.
It's not broken out.
It's hard to know where it's coming from. We're doing everything backwards.
Out of the proposed expenses, he's got them gross numbers. It's not showing how much is coming from taxation and how much is coming from all the other sources that you guys have in your columns going across.
Well, theoretically, wouldn't the taxation be...
It is all taxation.
Yeah.
It, it's just not all under the levy limit.
Right.
That's right, exactly.
Because there's excise tax, but all kinds of things that don't fall under the levy limit.
That's right.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
So, that raise, that raise appropriate comments, everything.
Even the water, water, you know, there's money here.
Well, those, those are separated, though, into enterprise funds, right?
Right.
So, those you could figure out.
Because that's the enterprise revenue of nine thirty, nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand.
But this does have, should we assume on page one, Sean, that, that taxation includes fees?
No.
No.
It doesn't.
Just taxation.
That's local receipts.
Okay, that's local receipts.
Yeah, that's just taxation.
And then, there's state aid, that'd be chapter seventy and chapter ninety?
Yeah, mo, yeah.
And then enterprise and other.
Water and sewer.
Okay.
I don't know, some, ambulance.
That's too gross, that's...
Those are all the big ones. I don't, I don't think there's anything else.
Exactly, and that's...
Well, I mean, this number on page three, that's seven, eight, four, five, five, twenty-seven, fifty-eight, I mean...
That should be all the taxation.
That's all taxation, and that should be right. It adds the fifty thousand in new growth, does have the debt exclusions, but, you know, that's just...
So, let's try something here.
So, the annual growth on that page three was one eighty-two, nine forty-nine. See that?
Yeah. Which is actually a little, little, little higher than our, off the cost three hundred thousand. So, really, that three hundred thousand is, it's, it's, what, three hundred and ten thousand or some, it's, or three hundred and thirty thousand. It's a little more than we had guessed. Yeah.
All right, so that's eight point eight million.
Out of that ten million and six, someone's got to calculate how much we're raising from taxation.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to figure.
For example, if you take the general government, seven fifty-eight, that's on that schedule, seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand, and you go to the general government schedule, budget in here,
Yeah.
you'll see that out of the seven fifty-eight, seven thirty-seven is raised from taxation.
Yep.
The rest is coming from free cash and enterprise funds.
Yep.
Okay, and so, we have to, it's that amount that's coming from taxation that's critical in the calculation of levy limit excess or surplus deficit. So, that's what has to be broken out.
Yeah, but that's...
Couldn't you just take the...
We all got nine million, five hundred thousand in that.
No, it's not. It, it, because that includes, that includes things that aren't in the taxation levy limit, so it includes...
Yes.
It, it could include other taxes, other funds raised by the town, so fees.
Mm-hmm.
And all those things don't fall under the levy limit. And those are in local receipts, I think, mo, almost all of them. So, that's nine hundred and fifty-seven thousand. Then you've got other available sources.
Right, thirteen plus seven.
And...
So, isn't raising appropriate, isn't that, or that just your...
Yeah, yeah, so we could try.
Okay, so...
But then...
Okay.
We could do that, but then we're making up a number.
So, so what I would like to do, what I am suggesting, is that let's get this to Justin, and let's figure this out tomorrow. Um, and we obviously are gonna have to reconvene either... Can we reconvene tomorrow night or Thursday night? I mean, we're gonna have to, we have to get this taken care of before. I don't want to wait until Monday night.
No.
I just want you to know that I want to be there tonight and then tomorrow, Sunday.
Yeah, I, I would consider this an emergency. So, as long as I notify the, the town clerk, um, we, we should be able to meet tomorrow night.
I thought under continuation, we can also...
Probably can't. Betsy can't.
It's supposed to be a thing for work tomorrow night.
You're supposed to be at a, so, here's, here's...
I could do Friday.
Here's, you could do Friday.
Can you do Friday? Yes.
Like, can anybody do like a during the day Friday?
You're welcome to pipe me in by phone if you care.
I have to look at my schedule.
I mean, what time do you get out of work?
Five.
And, and, so, so I would suggest that maybe tomorrow, even tomorrow, we...
How do you feel about Friday?
Can we, can we have a conference call with Justin tomorrow morning?
Mm-hmm.
Maybe the same, I don't know, you know?
He's at another town meeting tonight, right?
He's at another town meeting, so, so let's...
We had asked him if he would be here tonight.
We would ask him, right. So, we gotta get this...
When do we start using this spreadsheet? Ju, this is just this year, right?
Just this year.
This is this year.
So, we could, so we still have last year's spreadsheet, right, with last year's numbers in it?
Yes.
So, so theoretically, we...
That's a lot of work to be updating, it all.
Well, we, we cut and, we, we cut and paste the numbers and then put in the changes, right? I mean...
I can't, I, I personally don't, I think our basic math is right. You know, we might be off by ten thousand or...
That's right, yeah.
So...
We just gotta get this to say the same thing.
This has gotta say that.
Justin needs to take a look at, you know, some of the pages that, some of the pages he's worked on that I, I haven't done.
And the state aid is all known. We're, it's, that's not wrong.
Right.
Yeah, right. I mean, I, I...
This is why estimating is good, because then you know when the math is wrong.
Right.
I think, you know, Mar, Marlene is just gonna update the number, the most, the most recent numbers.
It, the workbook is updated based on last week's meeting and, well, and the two percent that's been added. Yeah, all the changes that were made at last week's meeting are in the workbook.
Right, and if you, if you set that to Justin, he ought to be able to...
And he has it.
And then, okay, then you, you ought to be able to ask him, okay.
Mm-hmm.
You're, you're, you know, you are acting or whatever, town accountant, um, what is, where do we stand against the levy limit? And show us the calculation. So...
We had asked him if he would be here tonight.
Let, let's, let's do this. Let's, let's try a conference call tomorrow, one o'clock. Get Justin in the morning to look at it. I can make it. I know, Betsy, you can't. Can anybody else?
I'll, hang on.
Tomorrow at one?
Tomorrow at one.
I'm asking him right now.
Oh, thank you.
You mean for all the boards or just like the conference call like we've been doing the last couple?
Either way.
Yeah, I, well, I can be available at one for however, however we want.
So, we can understand what this sheet says.
We need to understand what this, right.
Tomorrow, one o'clock tomorrow.
It'll be good if you came for next week.
Conference call tomorrow, then when do you want to meet again?
The next meeting is town meeting. That's, that's, that's the issue.
He's coming to town meetings.
Yeah, right, 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 so...
Who's coming to town meeting?
Justin.
He is?
I thought he said...
You told me he wasn't available that night. He would have, he could have somebody else there.
Oh, do you?
And he said he would have a, a handout for selecting financial...
So, let's try that, and can we, can we reconvene this group on, on either tomorrow night or Thursday night? What works better?
I'm available either.
Tomorrow's Wednesday, Wednesday night.
Paul, Diane.
Thursday's better.
I'm okay either one.
Sean?
I have to, I have to figure it out. I have a work thing tomorrow night.
You can't do, so, so Thursday might be, or maybe, probably not great, none of this.
We can all do Thursday.
Mm-hmm. So, let's...
Then the, and I can do Thursday.
So, let's shoot for Thursday.
Okay. That's what you said, right?
Is that okay?
Thursday's fine.
We'll shoot for Thursday.
Six thirty.
And, and Sean, if you can be there, if you can be there tomorrow, then maybe that way, if you're not there on Thursday, then we'll be... And then, we can still have a discussion tonight about free cash.
Yep.
We can finish that.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I think we can still have the discussion. It's a matter of what ultimately, and I, I believe we are correct as well with our numbers, but I totally agree. We don't want any surprises going into next Tuesday's meeting, so...
Right.
So, I think we can have those conversations tonight for sure, and then just verify it. Sharon had something there.
Justin can pencil this in for tomorrow at one o'clock for a concert, conference call. He just needs us to send him...
Tell him to put it in ink, not pencil.
What's that, Sharon?
He's waiting to hear that from me, so I'll tell him now.
Ink it in.
Ink it in. He just needs us to send him the warrant tonight to go, to coincide with what...
Town meeting warrant, yeah.
So, one o'clock conference Thursday, we reconvene.
One o'clock conference tomorrow.
Yeah, and if you can, if, anybody can make it, great. If you can't, that's okay, but Marlene and everyone will get it, get it figured out.
Yeah.
What time Thursday?
Six thirty?
Six thirty.
Six thirty, okay?
Yeah, it's okay with me, I don't know with my colleagues.
Okay with you guys?
That's fine.
I'm, I'm kinda waiting for Sean to see. You're looking at your schedule.
Sorry, I'm trying to, I have to, I don't usually do it this way, so I'm trying to figure out how to pull it up.
So, the things, um...
Got my email.
Let's go back to, let's go back...
I got three things, there's four now.
The three hundred and fifty anniversary ambulance stabilization fund.
Right. And for the townspeople, I apologize.
Go ahead, go ahead. Talk about free cash.
All right, so, we're gonna go, we're gonna discuss free cash.
Okay.
Because that is a known, it's four hundred and four thousand. Um, we talked about, where's that page? So...
So, we've got eighty-three left.
So, we've got eighty-three left.
You know, before you get into that, Darryl, do you know if they're, have they been holding any, any additional free cash as a result of the woes that we've had? Remember, they were kind of holding some stuff back. Is this...
My guess would be yes.
Okay, all right, but we don't, we have no idea.
They didn't indicate an amount.
They did not indicate an amount, and that's just, I, until we actually do a budget cycle where we, we, we clear our books in the fall when we're supposed to.
Yeah. Follow all of the, right, schedule day, the last...
Yeah, all that. I mean, we should be filing free cash in Schedule A tomorrow, or, or Thursday or Friday, right? I think is what, what Justin said. And so, and I feel really good about what they've done, but the state looks at it and says, well, you're six months late.
And they, DOR knows our town meeting is Tuesday.
So, so, yeah. So, so, so free cash. So, it's four hundred and four thousand. Snow nights is already out of it. So, in the end, after doing the things we have to do, special ed, deficits, um...
INI study.
INI, ambulance, and then the workstation replacement, we've got about eighty, eighty-three thousand dollars left.
Now, when you say ambulance...
That's the paramedic.
Are you talking about paramedic equipment? I just want to be clear.
Paramedic equipment, the lease, the thirteen thousand dollars.
Correct. I could be on the phone at four o'clock.
Yeah, tomorrow?
Yeah, I have interviews, though, that start at one thirty and go to four thirty, so I can't.
You can't be on for a line, okay, all right. We can, we can, we'll put you on the phone for, um, so, with eighty-three thousand dollars left in free cash, it's not a lot of free cash. There, there are some items that we need to talk about. One was, the big one is the ambulance, ambulance, possible ambulance replacement. Um, that's a three hundred, three hundred and two thousand dollars. It's a seven-year lease. It's fifty thousand dollars a year, correct? Do I have that right, Phil?
Correct.
So, did talk to the fire chief today, because I wanted to, you know, I had two school of thoughts. One is, got eighty-three thousand dollars in free cash. I'm done spending money. We don't know what's gonna come up between now and next fall, so let's just hold off. On, on the other hand, as the chief said, the ambulance, it's been on the list for the last three years to be replaced. As he, as he, as he said, he can, it gets recertified or inspected in October. It's probably gonna get inspected, but it will need some money spent on it. And there's some electrical issues with it. There was a fuel leak with it. Now, there's an electrical issue with the command console, which means it's gonna have to go to North Attleboro to get fixed. Which, the problem with that is when the ambulance leaves town, we not only have to pay for that cost, but we also lose revenue. coming in, depending on how many ambulance calls there might be. So, it's something to consider. The other thing, there's twenty-three thousand dollars in ambulance trust right now. Right, is that the right number?
It's around there.
Yeah, that's about what I remember.
And so, we can take twenty thousand dollars, we can offset some of the ambulance cost on that. Um, and there's a potential going forward in, as that, you know, there, there'll be money that, if the ambulance keeps to the numbers it's having, there should be money that falls to trust every year that may be available to help offset the fifty thousand dollars. So, we, we could.
Wait, what did you just say?
So, every year, money is built in ambulance surplus.
Right, right.
And then, at the end of that, we, they retain about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, sixty, sixty-five thousand is used for his budget.
Okay.
The others just kinda stays there and.
So in the future, it would come out of ambulance, not free cash?
Partially.
Partially, partially. And so, eventually, once that number is, when that number like gets over a hundred and twenty thousand or over a hundred and twenty-five thousand, which is possible, that it could be some this year, could be, and certainly possible next year, then you can take that five or ten thousand dollars and you can move that to trust. Is that making sense? So, unfortunately, this was a, didn't happen properly, anyway. So, so that's just one, one school, school of thought. So in theory, we could take twenty thousand dollars out of, out of trust. We can take thirty thousand dollars out of the eighty-three and we would be able to, you know.
Year one.
Do year one. Now.
Can I just back up and ask Phil something?
Yes.
That fifty thousand dollar a year anticipated lease cost, was that based on a twenty thousand dollar deduction from the total?
No.
Okay.
It's based on the full.
The full amount, thank you.
Right, and so we would. Huh?
So you could potentially save a little.
Eventually, you could say.
No, I just wanted to make sure we weren't using that twenty thousand dollars twice. Okay.
Yeah, we're only using it once.
Okay.
Plus the thirty gives us the fifty. We're essentially making a lease payment on it. We're not paying down on the, on, on the.
That's fine.
On the cost. If we elect to do this, that's option one, we, well, one option is we could do that. Another option is, and I did tell the chief this, I said, you know, there's a part of me that says we can hold off. You know, we have this money, we can leave it in free cash, and if something happens over the summer or over the fall and all of a sudden we absolutely need a new ambulance, it would mean we would have to have a town meeting, but.
Right.
We could hold it off. Um, you know, I mean, so, in defense of ambulance, they do generate revenue, he's, you know, but.
Yeah.
It's a lot of money.
Jeff, could you go over the revenue generation thing one more time on ambulance? What did you estimate it was each year?
So, so.
It's going up.
It goes up every year, but his budget, he runs the ambulance, this year he's running the ambulance at about fifty-five thousand dollars or something like that, because that's the only, that's the money he had. And so he's actually using some, okay, some fire money to help supplement. But anyway, going forward, what's been done in the past, there's been sixty-five, sixty or sixty-five thousand dollars that he runs the ambulance budget off, and all that comes out of ambulance surplus. None of that comes from taxation.
Uh, surplus or receipts, ambulance receipts?
Surplus or receipts, thank you.
Okay, so you got, we got sixty-seven thousand dollars in for ambulance receipts.
Yes, yep. And so, and if you all remember, last year at town meeting, we added, we, we added, we put forty thousand dollars into ambulance surplus because it had, in prior years, it had been.
And misapplied or miscredited or whatever, right.
So.
We have the same token. If we're gonna only put up thirty grand, he's gonna put up twenty, and that looks like that might be consistent for seven years. And then you have the ambulance another seven after that. I mean, if you put the article on the floor, you're sort of letting the town decide if they're willing to pay for it or not, right? So, I mean.
Where's the thirty?
Thirty would have to come from the, from, from our eighty-three, so our eighty-three would now be fifty-three in free cash.
Good question. Uh, on Justin's summary sheet, he shows an available balance in the ambulance RRA. I'm assuming that's a revolving account of a hundred and five thousand dollars.
Right.
So.
I, I, yes.
That's obviously a potential source of something for the ambulance.
No, it's, it's, no, as Stephen has, yeah. I, I don't know what the RRA is, but Stephen has gone over the budget with me several times, and I, I trust what Stephen has.
Complicated, I mean, I hear ya, Mike, but it's.
That's the money he's using to forward pay.
Yes.
That's like a whole year's worth of revenue.
Right. What's that?
He holds a whole year of revenue.
He holds a whole year of revenue in advance, right.
Yeah.
Right.
Which is very conservative.
So if we, if we move forward with that article.
Article thirty-one.
Yeah, with, with the ambulance article. So where would the, with the presumption that it's about fifty thousand a year for seven years, that twenty thousand of it would actually be, come from the ambulance services and thirty from the town in one way or another.
That's right.
Uh, we would own it at the end of that. It's a seven-year rent to own, basically. Where would, on, from year two through seven, where would that extra thirty thousand come from? Would we build it into taxation? Would we always have to assume that we better have free cash to pay it? I mean, that's.
That's part of, that's a great question. That's part of my, you know, in, in.
Oh, you were getting there, okay. All right.
We typically not pay leases with free cash.
Right, that's why I didn't know, but it was year one, get it rolling and then.
But ambulance with money out of revenue, and we've taken all of that to take care of other stuff, so the ambulance can't be purchased like it has in the past because it's been used for other sources.
Right.
Yeah.
That's the, that's the downfall, is that we used to have the money to purchase our ambulance before, and we don't anymore.
So, and then, Phil, you'll confirm, like, so next year, the, one of the leases is up, is that correct?
Yeah.
And that's, that's, so, that's not the whole hundred and sixty thousand dollars, but that's some. It's a good portion of it, so there's some possibility that some of that could be used going forward for the ambulance. Yeah, in the operating budget.
I mean, my cons, I guess my concern is that not, that the thirty thousand dollars is, it's not even necessarily the first seven years. It's what's the life expectancy of the ambulance? And so isn't really ad infinitum, that you're taking thirty thousand dollars out of free cash every single year from now until, who knows when, to pay for the, you know, are you just, are you starting a process by which you're always paying for the ambulance out of free cash every single year from now forever?
Because you're.
Until you figure out a way to build it into the budget, which you won't do.
I think you should wait for the levy limit to see exactly what that number is, if there's thirty thousand dollars in levy capacity, you build it into that budget.
I would agree.
Cause it's a forever thing, really.
Yep.
No, I, I agree. It's, 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 it's.
It's a forever thing.
So, so I think tonight the decision is, is that article gonna stay as the ambulance to go on town floor?
I think, I, the thoughtman already voted it on.
Right, Don, is how do we propose funding it?
Yeah, and, you know, if, if we decide we're not going to fund it for whatever reason, then we just.
Table it.
Table it.
Okay, but, but I'm, I'm.
Go ahead.
I would do, I would do the deal. I mean, I would, I would say, let's go ahead and plan to spend thirty thousand dollars out of free cash this year, and then see if we can figure out how to find that money elsewhere next year.
Right.
Well, it's not, it's not easy if you can figure out. It, it is.
Okay.
Because you're committed for seven years.
Yes, but, yes.
Yeah.
Could, okay. Can, can we do the INI out of free cash and throw the ambulance under?
That's what we already are.
We do have it in there.
It's already coming out of free cash.
Oh, right, sorry, I was thinking of the opposite way.
We really wanted the INI to come.
Sewer revenue.
Yeah, well, water main break.
This really leads to a discussion that we had three weeks ago, that we as a town.
Bigger plan.
Need to sit down this fall, and we need to plan.
Comprehensive overview.
Comprehensive planning for how we're going to address these things. Cause I don't see that our budget going forward is ever going to change.
Right.
You know, and we're always gonna have things coming up, where water and sewer is not adequately paying for itself. We're paying for things out of the regular town account that should be coming out of sewer and, you know. No, no complaint, but we, we, we have to sit down and figure that out. You know, the teachers have asked about health insurance. We need to, you know, talk to them and, or, you know, see what we're going to do about that. There's a lot of things.
Infrastructure in general.
Infrastructure is huge.
Water maintenance is huge.
Absolutely.
Well, that's the thing about existing, then what along.
Yeah, alone what we build, right, yeah.
And that, well, that's the thing about, it's, it's getting, it's gonna get worse.
Oh, yeah.
The sewer infrastructure's actually getting older. It's not getting newer.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, you know, we've done a lot of work, don't get me wrong, but like, the plant was built when it was built, and that's not gonna change until you build it again.
Right.
Even, even though we're fixing it along the way.
And, and how many years have we had a water main break on Route Five that's caused us?
I guess, you know, to stay up on the pipe since eighteen ninety-six, it's probably just.
Time, I think it's time.
So.
We got our money for it?
The one is over.
So.
I just opened up on the screen so you can take a look, but Stephen and I had received reports from Bay State for ambulance, so you'll see what is available in ambulance surplus in the ambulance trust. So we'll use the twenty thousand from the twenty-three.
Yeah.
One of Fortnite, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean.
It's twenty-three thousand dollars.
So we can certainly use that. So, so is the decision to wait and see what, where we are with, we, we don't have to make any of these decisions tonight.
No, no, I'm glad we had the conversation, but I think until we have that conference call with Justin tomorrow, and then we, we all meet on Thursday evening to, to firm things up.
That levy limit.
Yeah.
Where we're at, because we might end up wanting to use some free cash.
Oh, we know we need to do that.
For something else.
Yeah, so we stay under the levy limit.
Right.
So, so the other thing to talk about was the three-fiftieth committee had asked us for twenty-five thousand dollars. Last year they asked for twenty-five, we gave them ten. Ten. You know, there's.
Well, in total.
Things coming up.
Ed, in total, the town has given thirteen five in three separate articles.
Do you have an expansion in the revenue report there?
Okay, in, in total, the town has given twelve thousand, six hundred dollars.
Twelve, six. Sorry, yes.
Okay, there was four thousand, nine hundred and twenty-six dollars and ninety-four cents left over from the three-twenty-fifth.
Okay, okay. And seven thousand in donations.
And seven thousand from businesses that, to date.
Yeah.
Uh, so right now, the three-hundred-and-fifty account is twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six dollars and fifty-two cents.
So seven thousand dollars is raised to date?
To date, that's correct, okay. And.
I, I, I assume you're anticipating raising more money?
Absolutely, okay, but it's coming in real slow, and what our concern is right now is that we won't have the money to, to front, you know, like the bands that have been required and so on, okay? So there's money, upfront money that we're gonna have to pay to secure them.
What's the, I mean, just, what's the sense that you're gonna be able to raise seventy-five thousand dollars, period?
Well, we're hoping that we're gonna, we anticipate spending about a hundred and twenty-five thousand to a hundred and fifty thousand on this whole thing, okay? We're hoping that the town would give twenty-five thousand dollars a year for three years, and we would raise the rest of the seventy-five thousand from, through donations and, and everything else.
They put together a budget?
We do have a, a budget, um, not a, a firm budget, but we have estimates, yes.
That reflects something.
It's gonna be around a hundred to a hundred, well, our estimate was, I estimated about a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty, others have estimated about a hundred. I like theirs, but realistically, I think it's gonna be around a hundred and twenty-five.
And, and the work, so I guess, my question just is that, cause I've kind of heard various things, I'm not sure which thing is accurate. But is the seventy-five thousand dollars intended to be, um, like, uh?
When I first heard this. Actual described as seed money to, to get the thing started, so that you could then sell sponsorships, tickets, blah, blah, all, all the things that generate revenue. Yep, and then it reverts back, anything that's left over reverts back to the town at the end, okay? So.
Right, so, okay, so.
We're hoping that we'll, we won't have, we can give the town back their money what they appropriated to us. That's what we're hoping for, but that's.
So that'd be the last seventy-five thousand, really, in that scenario. How long has the fundraising effort been going on?
We've been doing this for probably almost six months now. They've contacted all the businesses, there's still some more business to contact. They're working diligently with, with all the businesses in town and others, banks and, and everybody else that can help support our, our cause. So we're, we're working as hard as we can to get this thing accomplished and, and get commitments. Anna and Bob and, I was hoping one of them would be here tonight, but they both had other commitments.
What if we wanted to match what they raised?
So that's, that's where we're at.
Okay.
I mean, it's a, it's just, it's a lot of money relative to seven thousand dollars raised.
Yeah. Right. Sunnily has, it cost them, I think, a hundred and twenty, around a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for their parade. Um, and then Conway, I believe they spent somewhere around a hundred thousand.
I'll put the, to Ed's point and to your questions, but ultimately the idea is to, through the fundraising, get the, get that money back. So you're giving a, you're giving a bottom line, what the, what, what the events cost or what the parade cost, not, not where all the money necessarily came from. So it wasn't all funded by town funds, I wouldn't imagine, in those other communities.
Right.
It's like it won't be here.
Town funds are what's the seed.
Yeah, I understand, yeah. Deposits and, and get the ball rolling type of.
When was the first big event that you're lucky to get?
We have a gala.
And, and that's.
That is New Year's Eve.
New Year's Eve.
So, leading up to that, um, and I can't say exactly how much money we're gonna need because we don't have that head dollar figure. That's why we asked for twenty-five thousand each year.
Right, but ob- obviously, like any event, whether through fundraising or, or through what the town appropriates, you know, checks are gonna be cut that night, one to the log cabin, one to the band, one, whatever else has happened in that night, so. You know, yes, there's tickets being sold, but, you know, I think some money's gonna go out maybe from the town, and then money's gonna come back in through the fundraising. I mean, that's how it works, right?
That's exactly how it works.
That's how we did it for years in Hoyok, that's how it worked, so.
So, so, Ed, thank you.
So we're asking for the seed money.
Yeah, thank you for that, and.
What does the upfront on that look like? When you, like, what were you able to bring in ahead of time in sponsorship?
In Hoyok? So, well, it all depended, because like, like Hatfield's doing, there were different events along the way. Really, it was insurance costs and things like that. The parade, it's, you know, the parade itself, which is really where my background is, you had to send some deposits for the bands, like a mummers band or something, you know, kind of, if you wanna call them a high-end, which is no offense to.
They're high-end for bands.
Which is no offense to bands that aren't mummers bands, but if you know what I mean, you know, the, but most of the money, to be honest, most of the money that's paid out for the Hoyok parade is paid out that day, because they've signed a contract to be there, and if they don't show up, they haven't been paid anything yet, so. I, I don't know what the, we haven't gotten into the coordination part of it yet, but that's, that's how I'm gonna be, you know, with, with fellows, members on the, on the three-hundred-and-fiftieth. But I, I don't know, Sean, I mean, I.
Or that's gonna follow the same.
Yeah, and, and, I mean, I, I sort of like Betsy's idea. I understand about the seed money that Ed's asking for, but I. that Ed's asking for, but I, and I know they were looking for more last year, it's a little difficult to, to say okay to, to the full $25,000 because we don't really know what, what's coming up for them.
Yeah.
But I think if it was 12,500 or 15,000, you know, I, I don't know, that, that would be how I would lean, which is, not that they don't need more, but, you know, ultimately.
No, I mean, my concern obviously is that if you've gone around, you've talked to all the businesses in town.
Yeah.
And you've raised $7,000.
Right.
Well, there aren't 10 times more businesses to hit.
No, but they're, right.
Or 20 times more if you want to raise the whole 125, and so, you know, so then you're going to sell tickets, you're going to have to sell a lot of tickets to a lot of events to make $100,000.
Yeah, I, well, and you also have band sponsor, you know, we'll have sponsorships for the band, you know, I think a lot of it is, until an event, and we, we actually went through, we go through this every year in Hoyok Parade as well, is until you get closer to the event, people aren't starting to write the checks, so, so while the marketing group's done awesome, it's, it's not really on, on the forefront of, of people's minds right now.
And really, the $7,000 comes from two, two businesses.
Right.
Right.
So, you know, I'm thinking of one in particular, a huge business in town that I surely anticipate that they are going to be.
They have, we have a full list of probably 40 to 50 businesses that we're going to be, we are soliciting, soliciting right now, we have a program that each one of them can take the dollar figure, I think Bobby presented this at the last meeting.
Different levels.
For them, so we don't double dip, so we don't go after them twice, we only want to go after the business once, so we're, we're getting them to commit their best offer with what they can help us on, and that's what the committee has, has set up, marketing committee.
Just for ballpark figure.
How many people are you hoping to have at the log cabin?
Four hundred.
That's hard to say, but right now, we're talking at least probably around 700 to 1,000.
People?
So they can accommodate them?
No, yeah, I believe that's what they said, I might be wrong, but I think.
I thought it was, Ed, I don't want to, I haven't been at the, I mean, I thought it was about 400 people, that they, that they were hoping for.
I think it'll take it, I think it'll take up to 1,000.
Yeah, well, it depends on the type of seating and the event, but, yeah, but, but it's going to take up that whole, that whole back.
It's $100 a ticket.
Oh, you know.
$100 a ticket, and I think, I mean, I haven't dealt with a log cabin in years, but a minimum of $50 a head.
Oh, yes, we're going to make some money there.
Yeah.
So you'll make like $25 a head?
Because so much will go towards the band and.
Right, exactly, so 25 a head times 400 is $10,000.
Right. Food events aren't great moneymakers.
Not if you have to pay for food.
Right, you know, but, but I'm sure there'll also be, part of that's going to be sponsorships and whatever, but, yeah, but you're right, if you want to go, what's the probable return?
Yes, the probable return is about $10,000.
I would, I would think that that's out of $100, probably $25.
It's definitely going to be a moneymaker, definitely going to be a moneymaker.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I think the only other thing to keep in mind too as well, I know we're, the fundraising's taking place, is, you know, the parade, which is going to be a big outlay of expenses for the bands and stuff.
That's going to be.
It is in June.
Right.
So, so they're going to have to be paid out of fiscal year, whether it's through the town or, or just the committee, you know, it's going to have to come out of there because we're not going to be able to do this at the next town meeting because it'll be too late.
The other big expense will be the fireworks, okay, at the end of the, the whole thing.
Yeah, those are.
That's in June?
No, that's luminary night.
Oh, in December.
In December.
Next December, 2020.
Oh, 2020.
That's going to be finalized, that's going to be our finish finale, grand finale of the whole process.
Okay, thank you, Ed.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thanks, Ed.
We're gonna, the last item that we were going to talk about, or at least bring up, was stabilization, we could put some money of, of free cash into, into stabilization, some of us made promises we couldn't keep some years ago, and so, so we did put some money in stabilization last year, so that's another possible source, again, I don't think we need to decide tonight.
No, I think we need those final.
But we don't have an article on the warrant to do that.
We do not?
No.
Oh, then.
We just talked about that, well, we talked about that yesterday.
Okay.
Talked about.
Just that there's, there was a, we talked about a percentage.
Yeah.
In the past of.
Available free cash, going back to stabilization.
We want a clarification from Justin what the stabilization balance was, and that is an accurate number, actually, there's been interest earned.
So what happens to free cash if we don't apply it anywhere?
Goes to free cash.
Goes, right.
Stays right there.
Well.
For next year.
Next, that's right.
Next year.
Or next year.
It's going to be certified.
Right.
It'll be.
Well, it doesn't disappear.
Right.
No, well, none of it disappears.
It's no longer usable.
It's our own town, but once that goes.
You can't spend it in the intervening period, but once free cash is certified, again, it appears again as free cash.
If we don't, if we don't assign it to something by June 30th.
That's right, it just.
Yeah.
Then it goes into free cash.
That's right.
For next year.
For, once it's recertified, correct, yeah.
Yeah, and, and that is, like with the ambulance, that's one of the, you know, and good thing you brought that up, so if we say, oh, we're going to wait until the ambulance really blows up, you know, it's not going to be there until all our financials for '19 are completed and they.
That's why I'd rather do it now.
They would have to be completed by.
It should be November, but.
It should be, but we all know the reality of that.
Why did you put it in finance reserve?
Yeah.
Huh? Why did you put it in finance reserve? Something actually did happen to the ambulance, that would be an emergency, unanticipated, right?
Do we have to have an article for that?
Don't think so.
I don't think so either.
Just an appropriation.
Oh, we could change, oh.
Well, that's an article, isn't it?
We talked about that last year.
You have to have an article to appropriate it, or to transfer it.
Well, is it?
You want to, you want to appropriate it from free cash.
Correct.
And move it to the stabilization fund.
No, if you want to put it in finance reserve, that's a, that's in an article, it's the budget article.
Oh, in the budget, yeah, you could do that, I thought you were talking about.
Well, that, that way, if there was a technically unanticipated event that occurred with the ambulance over the summer or any other time in the year, you could use that money to.
But you do have to have an article to appropriate it from free cash for the finance reserve budget.
You have to have a separate article that's not in the, that's not the budget article that's appropriating free cash?
Oh, I see what you're saying now, okay, so if we go to, yeah.
$30,000 in budget now for finance reserve.
Right, so you could put in money from free cash as the funding source, right, in the budget.
$113,000.
You could change that to $110,000.
Right, so reserve fund, and then, so free cash, we'd plug that number in there, yep. I forgot that this is in the operating budget.
So that's, that's an option.
Yeah, I like that option a lot.
I mean, now, if it was, because that way, if it truly is an emergent situation.
Right.
You can deal with it.
Then, yeah. Okay, all right, so the plan is tomorrow we'll meet.
Tomorrow at 1 o'clock.
Tomorrow 1 o'clock.
And Thursday at 6:30.
Thursday at 6:30.
Yes. One more question.
Yeah.
One more question, we had talked about replacing half of the town hall workstations for 7,000, and the question was, did you want to replace them all for 14?
Quite possibly, it's the same thing, got to see where we're really at, I guess.
Okay, so I'm going to write you guys a list so that if I'm not here, you go through.
We'll need a list.
Okay.
Email it to us.
I will.
When's the, when's the plan on actually doing that, should we move forward with the?
Doing what?
Doing the. After the town hall renovations, beforehand?
When would you update those?
Beforehand?
The work ofations?
And then when we vacate, what are we going to do with our workstations?
Well, actually, because it's coming from free cash, we have to use that free cash before June 30th.
We have to encumber it, I mean, you could order everything.
Right.
Right? I, I'm just asking the question, you know, how, how much are we putting into it and then we're going to turn around and.
Nothing happens.
And potentially, something happens with town hall that, from a construction perspective.
Well, and part of that money is the installation setup and everything, and then if you pull them out.
That, that, that's my point.
I mean, if, if both boards think that there may be a town meeting in the fall, I'm, I'm glad to.
Marlene, I'm not trying to push it off, I just don't want us to go through the work and then have the, the sledgehammer start and we're ripping up cables or doing something that we just installed.
Well, we're still going to, their computers, they're replacing computers that we're currently using.
Yeah.
That would be, whether they're a new computer or an old computer, it's the same risk.
Yeah.
The idea is that Windows is expiring, so.
In January.
They're in January, so it has, quote unquote, the recommendation is to do it by then.
We all know town hall renovation's not going to be done by January, so.
Understood.
But as we move computers.
Were you packing up your computers and bringing them to?
We're not moving out of any space for that long of period of time, the only place we've got moving.
They're going to work on one side of the building at a time and we'll, we can utilize the meeting room and work out of there when they're on the other side.
Bringing the computers with you.
Right, we'll be moving them.
Work site, why don't we all get laptops?
Right.
Why don't we all get laptops, why are we getting workstations, you just get an extra screen?
Is that what you meant by workstations, I thought you guys were talking about portable office walls?
No, I don't think so.
No, workstations, you're talking about the computers.
Those are called workstations, regular computers on your desk are called workstations.
Desktops.
They're desktops, not workstations.
They're, they're called workstations now.
IT, IT.
Well, what are we talking about?
Talking about the computers, the workstations.
No.
Desktop computers.
Computer, yes.
Desktop computer.
Computer.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. The computers that sit on our desk.
Why aren't we using laptops with an extra screen like I have in my office?
We, all the offices have computers.
And some of the programs.
But we're replacing them, that's my.
So you're saying we could replace them out for laptops, that's what you're suggesting?
Yeah, well, that's what I'm asking, why, why, and then you have it to take with you wherever you have to go.
Well, except for.
Or a Surface Pro, which is half the size of a laptop and will work just as well and you can carry it everywhere.
Except for, you have to, government is different than a business in that, do we want the employees taking the laptops everywhere they go, number one, there's things on there.
Well, they don't have to, but it gives you the availability when it, when the place is under construction, they just put it under your arm and go into another office.
To be server, they have to be backed up.
Mm-hmm.
Anyway, that is not a discussion.
Yeah, no, we'll talk, we'll talk about that, but it just seems in today's day and age, we, we're moving away from desktops.
No change is definite right now, there aren't any changes to be made at this time, you're going to wait until, okay, you just discussed options, okay.
Yeah, we're just discussing options.
Okay.
All right.
Dr. Scott Pomeroy.
Oh, I gotta talk to Scott, animal control.
You didn't say anything, so I wonder if you forgot, yeah.
No, I did not talk to Scott, I will talk to Scott.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have anything else that we need to talk about? Hearing done, yes.
Actually, the finance committee was going to review the articles and, were you going to do that tonight, you can send it to me tomorrow, just send me an email?
Well, I guess I just want to ask a, a general question, so, when we're recommending articles, my understanding was that last time we agreed, we would only recommend those articles that we thought were important for maintaining a fiscally responsible.
Correct.
Situation in town.
Correct.
And we were not comfortable recommending things like, you know, spending money on the 350th committee or whatever, because that, that's a tru- true choice of the taxpayers. So, we were just.
Debt exclusions.
Debt exclusions are, you don't.
A choice of the taxpayers.
Yeah, do you want to have it under rail or not have it under?
Right, exactly, so the question is, which of these articles do you see as being necessary for our maintaining a fiscally sound town government, and I think there are a fair number of them.
Well, yeah, I mean, the regulars.
Right.
Two, three.
Yeah.
Four, that's chapter 90.
I mean, we need to do these things to keep the town running. Five.
Oh, yeah.
Six, because it's a prior year expense, we already spent that money.
Seven is a prior year.
Seven is prior year, we already spent that money. Article eight, we already spent that money.
Yeah.
Nine.
Now, what about nine, we have to do that because we want to keep water and sewer running.
Yeah, anyway, it says reason appropriate, I would think you guys would.
I agree.
Yes, I would say so too.
Oh, oh, that's, 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 that's the water.
That's going to come from retained earnings.
So we need, we need to do that.
Yeah.
Same thing with article 10, that's special ed.
11 is up to everybody else.
Yeah, that's a hard number.
12.
That's a pilot, that's some.
That's receiving money for our solar on the high school.
Yes, we should vote on that.
We should vote on it, what does that mean?
Finance committee?
As a finance committee, we should vote to recommend it or not recommend it.
Okay, thank you.
Because it's a.
It'll be a cost savings utility.
It's a deferment of personal property taxes.
Right.
So that's a question mark.
It is, because it's payment.
Well, whether or not we should do it, I guess, I mean, this is really, I mean, this is really just authorizing us to enter into things, you don't know the exact terms of it.
Right.
But theoretically, it impacts, it does impact the personal property taxes that we collect as a town. So, I mean, it does have directly to do with the fiscal situation in town. So we should vote for it one way or for or against it, but we should vote.
Okay, so I'm putting a question mark there, but we can come back to it. Articles...
Well, why would you not vote to accept the pilot?
I'm not saying we...
No, no, I don't, I mean, it's, the company's gonna give us money for letting us use our thing.
Well, because, I mean, what they're, what they're, yeah, well, yeah, but this is to enter into an agreement. But, I mean, I mean, there, theoretically, why would somebody possibly vote against the pilot? Because they want all the personal property taxes upfront.
Right.
In the, they, because all the pilot does is, is basically negate depreciation, right? So, if you felt like that was a bad deal for the town, I guess, then you wouldn't want to do it. I'm not, I'm not opposed to it, I'm in favor of it, but I'm just saying, I thought we were going through the list, figuring out which things we're going to take a position on.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I meant, it wasn't a personal, why wouldn't you? It was a, as a committee, why wouldn't you?
No, we would take a position, I think.
We just have to decide. Okay, Article thirteen, this is not an issue.
So what do you want to know about that? How much is gonna be coming in from the pilot? I mean, what's gonna help you make your decision? The twenty-five-year lease for the solar on top of Smith Academy. It's gonna reduce the school's costs by thousands of dollars every year, and then the pilot amount, I don't have in front of me.
So, how much of the, are they putting enough panels on so it just, it just, um...
Powers the school.
Powers the school, or are they putting enough on so it powers the school and they sell surplus to the...
Yeah, yes and yes. So, you know, um...
Does it all go back to the, to the grid?
No, no, no. So, so whatever excess capacity might be.
It's only, and, and that's what I would want to know.
But this agree, this thing that we're voting on here...
Separate from the agreement, the school, right, personal property.
Right.
Should the town create a specialized schedule for the payment of personal property taxes on the equipment that generates the electricity that's going on the roof of the school?
Right.
That's what a pilot is.
Right.
It has nothing to do with what happens with the electricity or where it goes or how much it gets paid for it. It's strictly...
The contract's already signed, it's going up.
It's strictly, do you want to take the personal property taxes that they're going to pay and spread them out over a longer period of time, or do you want them more front-loaded? And what the business wants, this is the reason they're trying to get into the pilot, is to spread those over a bigger amount of time. The advantage to the town is that it makes revenue more consistent over time, because you don't get a lot of money in the first three years and then in the fifth year, you get hardly anything, 'cause it's depreciated.
So they're just paying personal property taxes on the solar panels themselves?
And the question would be, do you want that the way it normally would occur?
In a big one?
Which is, in a, in a big, look, front-loaded into the first several years, 'cause that's when it's worth money, and then it depreciates over time. Or do you want to get a consistent revenue stream over time?
Right, and it's not a ton of money, the pilot won't be a ton, to be perfectly honest, because it, it's for the school. It's not being sold back to the public where they, where they're gonna make money necessarily, you know?
So it's a smaller amount.
Right, and they might be seeking a smaller amount, that's right, because they're...
Because otherwise, the school would put the, put the panels on themselves. Instead of doing a, having a company.
Theoretically, but, yeah, right.
So, the question is, do we regard this as a fiscally responsible suggestion? Is this helpful to the town?
Yeah.
So, I mean, I guess the only thing you could know more than that is, what's the difference between the pilot and the actual personal property taxes that you would collect over twenty years, or however long it is, fifteen years, whatever the term is? That's the only thing you could know to make it...
And I don't think you'll have that answer in a week.
No, because they're not gonna negotiate.
It was written as, correct, correct.
But that's what we did for the, for the solar project over here.
And there'll be somebody, in, in the past, what happened is there was somebody on the fin- you on the Finance Committee were part of the team that negotiated, so, so long as that con- continues to be part of this.
You can't really negotiate it, like, with town meeting. You know what I mean?
No, right.
Like, it's, it's just too, it's too hard.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with saying yes on that. All right.
All right, Article thirteen.
Yeah, that's...
Ten-year contract, is that, oh, it's for recycling.
I don't think we need to...
That's their problem, isn't it?
Yeah, right.
Put it on our list, Betsy.
Policy.
Write it.
We want to adopt financial...
You might want to, yeah, consider fourteen.
Yeah, I would say yes on fourteen.
Yes, we want to say yes to that. A municipal commission on disability, that's up to the town.
No, we don't need to do that.
A trust fund for other post-employment benefits, and according with standard...
We want to do that. Right, you want to do that.
We have an exception on the report, um, because it's a gap departure, because we didn't adopt it in time.
Okay, so we want to say yes to that. Thank you. Um, this is a question for the people, Article seventeen.
Oh, that's the petition.
That's the petition. Uh, Article eighteen.
Oh, that's revolving funds.
We're, we're creating a tax title revolving fund.
Should we say yes to that?
Doesn't have any...
All right. I think the only, the only, the only, well, it does have an impact. I mean, we're, it's a good idea to set that money aside so that the treasurer can go out and...
I think it's a good idea, but, but what do you think, John? Do you think that's up to the people?
She expended quite a bit of money from her operating budget this year for, for costs.
This is something we could recommend.
I think that's a fiscal responsible suggestion.
It's bylaws, we don't need to do anything.
Tax collector, other records of all.
Yeah, I don't...
That's up to the town, I think.
That's the town.
Okay, lots of zoning, la, 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 la.
Get ahead thirty pages.
Go ahead to Article twenty-eight, page thirty-one.
Gosh, and thirty-one.
It'll be a short meeting, I'm sure. Okay, so, uh, school committee, five-year lease for a school van, that's up to the town, right? Keep going, page thirty-one.
Articles twenty-five, you got, you don't need to see those, um, CPA stuff?
We don't talk about community preservation.
Okay, cool, sorry.
That's their issue.
Yeah.
So this is the, the lease that's up to the people, right?
Yeah, but we would, it's probably...
It's a financial article.
It's a financial article.
Okay, so yes?
That's a yes. The paramedic equipment, that's a thirteen thousand.
We said we would do it, so we need to keep doing it. Inflow and infiltration, we definitely want to do that.
Seven-year...
Leaks for a new ambulance?
We're gonna talk about that Thursday.
Okay, see if the town...
Revolving, that's general, that's the revolving funds we currently have.
So we want to continue that?
So twenty-eight, you are recommending that?
We are recommending twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, and thirty-two.
Okay.
Okay, the thirty-three is the three-fiftieth, we'll talk about that Thursday.
We need to give money to unemployment, do we not? Article thirty-four.
That, that was in the operating budget. Unemployment was aligned, I mean, in the operating budget. It gets, the money is supposed to go into a unemployment fund, and by appropriating it in the budget, it just sits there. The accountant has recommended that we have a separate article every year to raise that money to transfer to the, to appropriate it and transfer to the unemployment fund.
But it just sits there unless you use it.
Oh, we use it.
Well...
It goes into a trust fund.
Right.
The Treasurer's Office believed that it closed out, went to the Treasurer's Fund, but you're, you're not doing that when you appropriate it in the budget.
But, but if we didn't use it, it would go into free cash.
Correct, go to the general fund.
If it goes into the trust, we'll never get it back.
Correct.
Why is that any different than the ambulance, than the ambulance stuff that's going on? When the ambulance...
They build up this unemployment fund to pay out for unemployment claims, correct?
No, I, I understand that.
Yeah, I, I don't, I still don't understand the article. I, I don't understand i- i- if it should fall, if it, if the twenty thousand dollars isn't... Isn't enough or isn't used, it should go to this trust, right?
It builds in the trust.
Mm-hmm.
But not the way we're doing it currently, because we're appropriating it the way we're doing it currently.
Right, the way we were...
Go to free cash, because it's used.
Correct.
But, but we appropriate money on the ambulance side, and that money goes from surplus to trust.
It doesn't go to trust, it goes to, the trust is money that was raised separately.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
It goes to revolving, yeah, revolving accounts.
Goes into the surplus, doesn't it?
A sort of, I guess, a philosophical question, if it's too, not too late for that. When you do, like, our unemployment costs are generally predictable. I mean, it, well, I mean, with, well, right. If we had a bunch of people who left here and went to someplace else and then got laid off at the someplace else and then collected unemployment, that would be something we couldn't anticipate. But, like, that's not like thirty people a year that that happens to or anything like that. And when, normally, when we do layoffs, we know we're doing it, and we would have to appropriate money anyway.
No, the school laid off people last year that we didn't, we didn't know about that they were laying off.
Well, right, but that shouldn't happen, 'cause we asked that they tell us, yeah.
There were four people at the school that we had to pay for last year. That came out of our...
That money gets eaten up very easily.
Right, we've had, I mean, we've asked periodically that people not do that without telling us that that's gonna be the impact, right? Yeah. Okay, I mean, that's fine, it's just, I have, just how much money do you want to build up in a trust?
Well, at some point, you can, from our conversation with Justin...
You don't have to fund it every year.
Exactly, you don't have to fund it every year. Right now, there's nothing there, so...
Oh, all right.
Put money into it, though, this is the way you have to do it.
But at some point, if, three years, if we haven't used any and we haven't balanced, then we'll say, hey, this year, we don't need it.
You don't need to bother, okay.
Like, now, we have...
So this article essentially takes any unused monies, puts it to an unemployment fund.
Puts it there, and then if you need it, transfer it. Would you have to vote to do that, though?
According to what we heard from Justin, it was the twenty thousand dollars would automatically be transferred to the trust account. And as we spend it, we transfer money back to the general fund, because you're paying...
To spend it out of the general fund, right.
But that's so it doesn't roll into free cash at the end of the year.
No, just...
And last, last year, it rolled into free cash.
Right.
So you have nothing.
You have no savings.
Well, but you had more free cash.
You had more free cash.
Yes.
See, Sean is on a glass half-full.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, uh, thirty-four, can we recommend that?
If you clean up all those things, you know you have no free cash, so I just want to point that out.
That's fine.
Okay, uh, Article thirty-five.
So what was that?
That's the budget.
Who said yes to thirty-four?
Thirty-four, okay.
We want to recommend thirty-five.
That's the budget article.
Excuse me.
Hopefully, hopefully, we will.
We haven't approved a budget yet.
No, but, but we won't put one forward that we don't approve of, hopefully, right?
That's just, no, we don't need to do anything.
Hopefully.
Okay, so we're done.
I was gonna say, they took the words right out.
Marlene, did you get all of it?
I think so. So thirty-five was, you did recommend, you're recommending seventy-five, that's the seventy-five, thirty-five.
So, just in terms of minutes, we should make a motion that...
Want to go through it, Kathy? We want to make one motion?
Let's make one motion.
Just read the list.
And read the list of the, of, of, the, of the articles that we...
I make a motion that the Finance Committee recommend articles two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, twelve, fourteen, sixteen, eighteen, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-two, thirty-four, and thirty-five.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion carries. Okay. Yeah, I just kind of felt like it needs to be...
That's a good idea.
Yeah, no, that's...
Thank you.
Kind of official. Okay, so we will, this group will reconvene in two days, Thursday at six-thirty. And hopefully, that will be relatively short. Don't count on it. Anything else?
Should I leave this with you?
Oh, yeah, you just put it there. Yeah. Yes, Mike?
You guys contemplating, remember, possibly your license and free cash for the Finance Committee to go from charter...
Yeah.
Right now, we're just figuring out, when you think about it.
I wrote that down.
You know what I'm thinking about is, it's the three-fiftieth, and if they get themselves into a, into a problem...
Right.
And, you know, overspend or overcommit without having the money, that at least perhaps the Finance Committee and the Reserve Fund would be willing to consider backing them until such time that, you know, the revenue stream starts to come in.
See, we, we can't...
It's maybe an exceptional year, I guess, what I'm saying, for the Finance Reserve. And, and that would go with the discussion we had if we move a significant portion of free cash, if we can, into the Finance Reserve budget. So, if either there's an issue with an ambulance or the three-fiftieth.
Or anything for that.
We just, I just don't know if we...
If we have two hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars under the levy, we can...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We can do all the above.
What town do you live in?
Yeah.
So I wrote that down to Finance Reserve.
Yeah.
Yeah, we talked about moving a significant amount of money.
You have to remember that we cannot spend a penny if we don't have it, okay? If we spend X amount of dollars and then we have five bands that we need to, we need money for, we can't, we can't get those five bands, 'cause we don't have the money. We can't deficit spend on that at all.
Oh, that's against the law. No, understood.
That's the dilemma that we...
Is that what they call that? Good.
Definitely.
Thank you.
The other thing you have to keep in mind is, is right now, the way the schedule reads, if I read it right, on receipts from property tax levy on that second schedule, we're looking at a five percent increase over this year coming in from property taxes, which is a five percent increase to property, to taxpayers.
I hope this is something every year.
No, it's only a two and a half.
Yeah, we have this conversation every year, it seems like...
Unless you, unless you didn't take the levy limit last year, I mean, that's how that happens, is you don't take the levy limit of prior year.
We took the levy limit last year. We always take the levy limit.
That's why I'm sitting there with something for that.
Yeah, there's some, something, something's weird that...
Yeah, right.
Yeah, 'cause if you took the levy limit last year, the way you could do that is if you took nothing last year, right? Then you'd have, then this year, you'd have five percent to add to the levy limit, because you didn't take any last year.
Right, right.
But we took it all last year, so...
Yeah.
But there's new growth, new growth, yeah.
Yeah, new growth is the only, right, proposed new growth.
It was higher last year than we had anticipated, new growth.
Yeah.
I remember Justin saying that.
Right, 'cause we're, we're conservative on those, those numbers too, so, all right. Any other business for the Finance Committee? So, for those of you that can make one o'clock tomorrow, that'll be great. You'll just email us when you get actual confirmation from Justin.
Where are you gonna be?
We already have it.
I know.
Oh, he sent them to me, okay.
Sharon, Sharon's saying that Justin gave confirmation.
Okay.
But where, I think, where are you gonna be?
Board is pencils, so...
All right.
No pencils.
Board of Selectmen, do you have anything else for us?
Not for you guys, we still have some more.